I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can we have a roll call, please?
Do you have a tally?
Here.
Here?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Tamara?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have approve or amend the agenda. We will be amending the agenda by adding T-Mobile Site Plan Administrative Review, and that'll be under New Business, Letter C. If there are no other amendments, I would need a motion to...
Make a motion. I'll make the motion to amend the agenda, adding T-Mobile Site Plan under Item C, New Business.
And Alex, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next we have the minutes. Approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? These are from the June 4th. If not, a motion would be in order to approve the minutes as presented. Is there such a motion?
So...
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
DJ, yeah.
DJ, you're the one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I second it.
All in favor was I. Motion carried. Do approve the minutes as presented. Next, we have public comments. If you have a comment tonight on the APC Towers, Wireless Towers, Special Land Use, please wait to comment for this at the public hearing. That way, it will be recorded with that public hearing, and you will have, all have your chance, okay? Other than that, are there any other public comments? If not, we will move forward. Oh, there should be some more chairs in the back, further all the way, like in the vestibule?
All okay.
You're okay? Okay, well, they're there. We need them, okay? Thanks. Okay. So, just a reminder, at the public hearing, no decisions are made. We'll hear from the petitioner first, then the planner, then questions or comments from the public. And we did get some letters in. Those will be read, and then comments from the commissioners. Then we'll close the public hearing, and then further on down the agenda, it is under Number 10A. That's when a decision will be made to either approve, deny, or postpone. And with that note, also, when it's time for the public to come up, if you would please sign, there should be a paper on the podium with your name and your address, so it can be recorded correctly in the minutes. So, on that note, a motion would be in order to open the public hearing for APC, APC Towers, new wireless tower, special land use located on Romeo Plank, parcel number 130206400014. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Where is that? On Romeo Plank is where the address comes on the... It's a long parcel. It goes from Romeo Plank, I believe, to McFadden, all along Pratt. Okay? That's okay. Not a problem. Okay, so, we have opened the public hearing. Let's see. Lost my spot here, so bear with me one second. Okay, so, it was posted in the newspaper. We have that. We have notification of everyone that was notified, so we can check that off the list. And we'll go with the representative. If you would come to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Amy Rodriguez with Telecad Wireless, and I'm representing APC Towers. And we are requesting approval of a... And I'm sorry, with me this evening is Dan Crane, our attorney. We're requesting approval of a new telecommunications facility on property owned by Mobile Holdings. And this project is to construct a 175-foot monopole tower with a five-foot lightning rod, and that will be within a chain-linked fenced area of 60 by 60 for the ground equipment. And the entire fenced area will be surrounded by landscaping. And in addition to our landscaping, there's existing trees on the south and west side of where the tower will be constructed. And this is an unmanned facility, and it's not going to create any additional traffic in the area. And the tower will be designed to accommodate a minimum of three carriers, and Verizon has committed to being the anchor tenant. And with the availability of future colocations, then this is going to lessen the need for additional towers as other carriers need service in the area as well. And we did look at existing towers for colocations, but Verizon is on most of those towers already. And this was a project that APC and Verizon worked together. So, and the closest tower to this location is approximately two miles away. So, this, this tower is going to allow Verizon to connect to their existing network and improve service and reliability of their network in the area. And... So, and that's going to be beneficial in case of emergencies, so that 911 can be reached if needed. And especially with, in talking with some of the community members, when there's events at Lakes Orchard or just on weekends with a lot of traffic, they have limited to no cell coverage in that area, because they're just about two miles away from there. So, so that will help with that when there's an influx of traffic. And then, they have limited wireless service over there, so this tower will help with that as well. So, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We feel this, our application meets the criteria and is in compliance with the township ordinance and, and with state and federal regulations. Once, or when we receive approval, then we will apply for remaining government approvals and permits through the Road Commission and the building permit, things, things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Dan Crane, attorney for APC Towers. I think Amy did a fantastic job kind of explaining, high level, what we are doing here. I just would like to... I apologize. Can you hear me? All right, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So, as I mentioned, Dan Crane, a couple of big items I would like to discuss. One, you most, you do have it in your packet, and that is the propagation map. So essentially, the way it works is that Verizon Wireless kind of determines where do they need a tower. And as you can see, the yellow and the red mean that we don't have good coverage there. Green means we do have good coverage. And we really lucked out. We found a parcel that met a lot of our pretty strict criteria that's relatively centered in the, in the area of where we are trying to provide coverage for. So the location is in fact ideal. Additionally, I would like to bring up that the tower is centrally located between McFadden Road and Romeo Plank. It's also tucked back near the adjacent portion, which is more of a wetland and undevelopable. That will allow much visual coverage from both the main roads that are adjacent to it. You know, you can have the trees surrounding it. It just, it helps cover it up. It finds, it's a good place for us to put our tower with minimal visual impact. Additionally, I would like to bring up that, as Amy kind of alluded to, over 80% of emergency phone calls go through wireless communication towers. So it is not, you know, it is absolutely true that we are, we do build these towers because we like to provide good coverage to our customers in your community, but it is more than that. They are used for emergency services, so that's any situation on the roads, any, once someone's out in their yard and they need to call an ambulance, it's very likely they will go through this tower. And not having viable communications does significantly impede that ability. Additionally, when picking our location, I feel bad. I feel like I'm boring you with all the nitty-gritty. But additionally, we are extremely regulated. We do everything in compliance with multiple governmental agencies, from the FCC to the FAA. So when we picked our location, you know, we had to factor in the wetlands, which your zoning ordinance does address. You had to factor in all of those extreme regulations that we have to adhere to. We also factored in the drain, which is across the back of the portion. Obviously, we can't build it too close to that. And the FAA, we meet all of our FAA requirements to make sure that it's done safely. The tower is set back over 200 feet from the road and over 1,000 feet from the other two roads. And it's designed to be self-collapsing. So in the event that, let's say, some crazy scenario happens, and there's some tornado, 110 mile an hour winds, whatever it may be, the tower's actually designed, that way it buckles in the middle, and itself falls down. So that way, it doesn't tip over. It just falls down in the area. Thank you guys for having us. I look forward to hearing all the comments and answering any questions we may, I may come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin?
Sure. So for tonight's meeting, this is a special land use because it is proposed to be a new telecommunications tower. The other part of this discussion later on is site plan review. And so the planning commission can choose to take action on this special land use, would be a recommendation to the township board. And then the site plan, if we feel like it's adequate or adequate with conditions, that's something that we would approve at the planning commission level. But those are the two different decisions for tonight's pro, components. For the review of the special land use, so you have my review letter that's dated July 30th. Specifically, we'll have to review the five different standards associated with the special land use to justify an approval. If we want to justify denial, it'd be specifically to name which one and the fact finding surrounding it. So the standard one is talking about the location, size, and character is harmonious with the neighborhood. Number two is that it's talking about the proposed use based on pedestrian or vehicle traffic would not be more hazardous. Number three is that the proposed use is located, size, intensity, site layout, hours of operation to not cause or minimize a nuisance for dust, noise, fumes, vibration, smoke, or lighting. Four is talking about the proposed location, height of buildings, structures would not interfere with the neighboring properties as far as determining their value. Added landscaping don't interfere with that or discourage their ability to exist. Five is talking about that the proposed use is harmonious with the physical and economic aspects of the surrounding area. Six is that it's necessary for public convenience. Seven is that it's designed, located, and planned for public health, safety, and welfare. And eight talks about that the proposed use would not be detrimental to, or cause an injury to the neighborhood. It's harmonious with future as well as existing uses in that surrounding area. As far as their site plan review goes, there's only a few outstanding items to bring to the planning commission's attention. Part of it is topography, grading, or site drainage, and then exterior lighting. So they do propose to have downward-facing screening, or downward-facing lighting, but we want to see a picture of that specific device to verify that, that we are both seeing the same thing. Some different items the planning commission can conserve be sufficient as existing improvements. So if we provided an aerial that shows everything within 200 feet, that we can conserve sufficient, as well as any on-site utilities the PC could consider what's been provided adequate thus far due to the location of the tower and not necessarily needing those things. As far as compliance with our specific wireless tower communication requirements, so our total limit we allow is 175 feet. They are proposing an additional five-foot lightning rod. And so that's something that we could either say, I, wasn't clear to me if the antenna is part of, typically can be used. Don't include that as part of the total structure, because it's an additional feature.
It's not structural.
Correct. And so typically, that's considered sufficient, but I wanted to check with the planning commission that we're on the same page on that interpretation. As the applicant had mentioned, we require innovative design or some level of camouflagey, monopole, self-collapsing technology. So that's something we could look at and say, is that sufficient? The other component is on the site plan, is they show that there's evergreen trees that are proposed to be around the fenced-in area. We do require those different specific MNA's when we decide, is that sufficient screening for this, this proposed use? As mentioned, they'll get their driveway permit through the Road Commission. We'll mention the exterior lighting. And then the other component is the planning commission has discretion to determine if parking spaces are required. In the past for different public utilities and unmanned buildings, we haven't required parking, just due to the nature of the operation. They do have different areas where somebody could easily pull off in a safe way and wait there in their vehicle and service whatever needs to be done on site. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, and we can go more into the standards during board discussions.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, do you want to make your comments now, or do you want to let the public go first? Go with the public going first? Okay. All right. So, anyone that has a comment, I'm going to ask that you please try and limit it to maybe about three minutes, since we do have a lot of people here tonight. And when you step up to the podium, please make sure to print your name and your address, so the record is correct. And on that note, anybody that would like to come up to the podium, please do.
Since I don't understand meetings very well, is there any way to, should we show you a picture? Okay.
Sure.
So this is Google Maps. That's my home. That's the proposed site.
Yep.
That's 654 P L A. That's my home. That's the proposed site. Oops. That's my home. That's the proposed site. Chair, this, here. Okay. That's my home. That's the proposed site. This is my home. And that's the proposed site. Yes, sir? That's my home. And that's the proposed site. I want to tell you that my husband and I worked... My name is Paula Helsner. My address is 6245 Pratt Road. And I remember coming in here when I had to make plans to build my home. And everybody was so sweet and helpful, because I didn't know. We spent 25 years saving for our retirement home. I didn't build a three-quarter of a million dollar home to go out and stand in my driveway and see 875 foot. I go out there and sit in my driveway, and I watch the deer in the field. It's just heartbreaking that they want to put it right there when this farmer has acres, thousands of acres around. Reed Road, there's no homes on Reed Road. None. You didn't come talk to us when you stood up here and you, and you talked about all your plans you made. You didn't talk about the people, the people that it affects on that road. You didn't come to knock on my door. 25 years of work in 12 hours, six days, we both, me and my husband, to save, to have a cell phone tower. We don't have no problem with coverage. We just got Comcast. Comcast offers us so much. We didn't ask for Comcast. They came through. We took it. We just got gas. That was $7,000 to come to the house. When I built, I didn't have gas there. I had to do geothermal. I'm okay with that. I, I can't do this. I can't, 775 feet, right on my driveway? Any of you want that? We got a cell phone tower on 34 Mile. We got another one. They said two miles away. Two miles, two miles, two miles. Do we need one right in the middle of our country? Where we have children, environment animals? And it's going to make 911 better? That, that's, that's a sad, sorry excuse. I don't know anybody who has trouble calling 911. It's on your cell phone. You can come, you didn't come to my house and ask me how my cell phone coverage was? Right? Did you?
If we could direct comments to the chair.
To the what?
To the chair.
To the chair.
Yeah.
To the commission.
Oh, gotcha.
To us up here.
Because they presented their knowledge to you, but they didn't say that they came and talked to the residents, did they? It would have been nice if somebody would have came and talked to us if we needed it. But they didn't. And I had to take some of my time to break free. Also, I have concerns that there's health factors. They may have not have all been researched enough yet. But on Google, when you talk about the distance, it says at least 1,350 feet away. I'm there, I'm not near. That's not, that's 600. And if, I'm sitting at the end of my driveway, because I like to watch the animals out there. I got crows I feed. I've got my mama deers. They sit in that field. You're going to put up evergreens. Well, how far does an evergreen grow compared to 175 feet? And then you're going to put it in the corner of some trees with a lightning tower on it. And lightning hits trees all the time. So, I, I'm, I'm hurt that I wasn't consulting, as far as a survey goes, to see if it's needed in our area. And I don't need it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any other public comments?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Lauren Ray.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Lauren Ray. I am the northernmost house on Romeo Plank and Pratt. And I'm sure that from my yard, I will be able to see that tower. But however, probably in the minority, I do have problems with cell service. I do have a 15-month-old child. And I do worry about the reliability of contact and emergency services. So if I have to look at a cell tower, I don't care if there's a lightning rod on top or a poop emoji. If it's, I know that I can get service if I have an emergency at my family or with my family. That's more important to me. So, I, I'm assuming I'm in the minority, but that's my feeling on it, because I'm at Romeo Plank and Pratt. I'll be able to see.
Your address?
7888 Romeo Plank. Last house on the set. And I do have, there's no cell, there's no internet service. Internet service sucks. So, I mean, we want to embrace technology with Google, but we don't want to embrace technology with reliable service. If that makes sense to me. But my family comes first over what's on the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Not much of a public speaker.
You're fine.
Twitch and beggars.
You're fine.
So my name is Jonathan Sassine. I'm at the Romeo Plank and Pratt Road. I'm at the corner right there, corner house, 16575 Pratt Road. Right here in a minute. Absolutely, every day, I'll see this thing pulling out of my driveway. No, I, I agree, it is about family and that, that, man, I, and yeah, it chokes me up to hear anything about family anytime. My mom worked at Ford, she's talking about 12, and Paula was talking about 12 hours a day. She worked 12 all her day. When she passed away about three, four years ago through the COPD. It was something, obviously, something different. I decided to take over because of the beautiful landscape. And as everybody's talking about, I want to comment a couple of things on the wildlife. First off, I want to touch then that the wildlife is... It's, 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 I don't, I don't got a word. It's stellar. I don't know. It's, it's, um, next to none, I really, there's deer. I mean, the deer, every day, I, oh my gosh, she bought trail cam footage. I got trail cam footage. Oh my goodness, deer. I also want to touch, and I don't know how much you guys care about wildlife, but there is for sure, and I've been out there every day trying to get video of it again. There's a bald eagle. There's a blue huron that I've seen, witnessed in my eyes, binoculars. Holy cow, hon, come take us. That flies in that field, not nesting in that field. I, I get, I, okay, okay, I get it. It has flown in there. That goes away. Let me say, first off, I am a, not first off. Electrician for 27 years. Okay, not a communications major, not a scientist. However, I do know about how these things are powered. I do know about EMF. I forgot all my, my equipment. I have an RF detector, an EMF detector. They have Geiger's. All this stuff works on different spectrums, is what it is. It's all different light spectrums, okay? Different radiation. You've got UV light comes from the sun. You've got different radiations that come off different cellular towers. 5G, 6G, they're already talking about 7G. I want the best. They want 7G. Now, well, I don't. You know, I'm, whatever. I don't want any of that stuff. He, you know, whatever. He wants to implement that stuff. Whoever wants to implement that stuff, I get it. The emergency stuff, I get it. To be honest with you, not to, I don't want to touch too much on personal stories, of course. But real quick, the whole 911, when I did call 911, like that. Armada, I, I will comment, Armada. Thank you, Armada. I don't know if anybody's from the fire department here, or permanent, they would probably know, and they've probably been to that house more than a couple of times and to revive her and leave her. Touch again on the wildlife. That was one of her things, was deer. She loved to feed the birds. The birds, the birds, they don't, they're not telling you, these put off frequencies and vibration. It drives animals away. That's one of the biggest things. And again, I'm right at the corner there. Right at the curb, back corner, pine trees. Christmas lights every year. I'm not necess, I'm a little selfish. It's for me more than anybody. I got to be honest. My mom loved to know. There was a certain tree I did at the end. Excuse me. Anyway, every day, I'm going to see this thing from my window. It's not, I'm like Paula. I'm, now, I admit, I'm more than 600 feet away, but I'm going to see it from my bedroom window, my living room window. As soon as I pull, every day, I drive the drive-in every day. That's the first thing I'm going to see, every day. I know I'm jumping all over the place. Please bear with me a little bit. I'm a little worked up. I'm trying.
We're closing in on your three minutes. So if you can just kind of wrap it up.
I was going to say, I didn't necessarily prepare anything. How do I want to close? Again, back to, I just want to do touch on health issues. I do know guys, back to that, yeah, I am an electrician. I do know guys that have worked with this stuff, and it does cause skin irritations. There is a such thing. And there is such a thing as radiation I was getting into before. There is, the light spectrum. We're all like, we're all, I don't want to get too much in electrons. Just like water, they're putting these things on top of water towers. I, I've been wanting to speak out against that. That's not, oh, you're talking molecular, molecular levels and electrons to these guys. And we can shoot holes in each other's stories as far as the data goes. Paula's right. No one's really right at this point. They need, they need cell towers every two, two miles, four miles for their whole grid to work. But for the whole grid to work, who, what, you know, what are we going to give up in the meantime? Our livelihood, our, you know, our looks, our children? I know, I get it. I get the emergency service thing, but man, a lot of us are there because of the countryside, because of the wildlife, because of this. Be honest with you, I thought this was Friday, so I, I thought I had some time to prepare. Please excuse me. Other than that, that's about all I can really touch on that I can remember, think of. I know I'm going to get in the car and kick my butt.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Please make sure to sign and write your address.
Sorry, I don't mean to take up anybody's time. I apologize.
No, no. It was, that's fine. We appreciate your comments.
I have, you know, I know I have plenty of service. I know that's not everybody. Definitely wasn't as prepared as I wanted to be. In short, definitely against.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening. My name's Brian Doherty. I live directly across from the site plan, 16155 Pratt Road. Is this a 5G tower? Is it, what kind of radio frequencies are we going to be admitting from this? At a hundred and eighty foot, you know, falls over, I believe the guidelines say that you're supposed to be two times the height away from a roadway or another, you know, structure. I'm about five, six hundred feet from the existing plan, which there is a roadway in between there. So, I do have some concern if it was to fall down, you know, able to get out or anything like that. Visually, it's, they're not appealing to the eye, right? Resell value on your home, it's definitely gonna be diminished, they say anywhere from nine to twenty percent. Is there gonna be any sort of tax breaks or anything like that, you know, assess value? Can you guys touch base on any of those guidelines that for a certain height of the tower or distance from roadways or dwellings?
Other than what our ordinance.
Correct, so, so we have standards in our ordinance and they do meet that standard.
So, at two, a hundred and eighty feet tall and only being two hundred feet off the road, that, that meets your, your.
Correct, it's not a two times.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I know, I'm raising a family, I got livestock there, you know, it's, I, you know, like the other gentleman was saying, you know, we don't know what the concern with the health issues are, you know. I, I do oppose this, I'm not for this, my family's not for this, I'm pretty sure most of the neighbors are, you know, you know, standing with that. Like the nine one one emergency, we've never had an issue calling nine one one. Seems like this is a big thing that they're wanting to add for Blake's, maybe put it on Blake's property, you know? They, they pay a lot of money and they can, you know, they can support their people that they're inviting into our community. With that being said, yeah, I'm not happy to see this going up at all if you guys do move forward.
Brian, I have two emails.
Yep, if you want to touch base on any of those, I would.
Would you, if you, I will read them then when we're, when everybody's done speaking.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Are there any other public comments? No? Okay, I will, oh, here is one, okay.
Hi, I'm Samantha. My husband Sean and I recently bought the old farmhouse, seventy-nine, three seventy-nine Romeo Plank. When we bought the land, I'm born and raised in Armada and that's all zoned agricultural behind us. I mean, we never thought there would be an industrial a hundred and seventy-five foot tower going up as, has already, hundred, yeah, a hundred and eighty total feet. But as everybody kind of touched on, like, that would have affected us even buying the house. Like, if I knew that was gonna be the view out of my back door, I wouldn't have bought that house. And we're in the process of, you know, putting our blood, sweat and tears into this thing. We have two kids under two years old. It's, it's just not, you know, what we signed up for, it's not what we think of when we think of Armada. We think of farmers and family and farmland and the community. And this seems like it's maybe just benefiting whoever is profiting off the tower. My husband has Verizon through work, I have T-Mobile. We have never had an issue with service when we are at the house. I know wetlands were mentioned, I don't know if there's even actual like zoned wetland, anything over there. So, I don't know why that was even kind of referenced as a point of supporting tower build. We also have the lovely tornado siren right in our front yard. So, having that tower in our backyard, like, it's just, I feel like we would never be able to sell this house if we wanted to move. Like, nobody wants to live sandwiched in between those two things with the siren going off. Whatever kind of radiation is coming from the tower, it's just, it's, it's not what we signed up for. And two to three feet of landscaping to block a hundred and eighty foot tower doesn't really seem like that's gonna, you know, make up for the eyes or that it is, you know? You might as well not really put landscaping in it at that point. But yeah, I kind of second what everybody else had said with opposing the tower build. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha, your last name?
I, Kildore.
Where's the roadway gonna be coming off of? Is it off Pratt or Romeo Plank to access the towers or something? Or everything they're saying is off Romeo Plank, but it needs to be connected to Pratt.
It's off Pratt. It's off of Pratt.
So, I'd be right across from my driveway, so.
My name is Jack Krongeyer. I moved in here forty-five years ago, all farmland. And secretary.
Handy to have.
And it's, it's just been nice out there. If, if Jim wants to lease some land to these people, let him move it down one mile through Irwin Road right behind his house. Let him have it right there, we don't want it.
There's no houses over there.
Yeah, there's, there's just a couple of houses down there.
Okay. Sir. Sir, will you please address the commission here up here?
Oh, you, okay, hi.
Thank you.
But yeah, down by Irwin Road, it's, it's open down there, right behind his house, put it up by the silo, that's fine. That's a mile away from us. If you gotta have it, that's better for, for us anyhow. That's it.
Thank you.
I guess my paper's over there.
It'll be back up, I'm sure. Are there any other public comments? Okay, well, I think then while we're waiting on that. Oh, right, I know. She was, he was waiting on the paper.
She was gonna read from the.
I was gonna read this note. One of the letters from Brian Dougherty. Dougherty, sorry, I apologize. Dear Armada Town Hall or Town Planning Department, I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing as a concerned resident of one six one five five Pratt Road regarding the proposal to install a five G cellphone tower directly in front of my dwelling. While I understand the importance of improving telecommunications infrastructure, I have serious concerns about the placement of this particular tower. The location directly in front of my home raises several issues, including visual impact. The proposed structure would significantly alter the appearance and character of the neighborhood, potentially affecting the property value and the overall aesthetic of the community. Health and safety concerns, like many residents, I am uneasy about the long-term health implications of living in a close proximity to a five G tower despite the current scientific discourse. Lack of community input, to my knowledge, there has been minimal public consultation or opportunity for residents to express their views or suggest alternative locations for the tower. I respectfully request that the Town Hall reconsider the proposed location and explore other viable options that do not directly impact residential properties. I would also appreciate being informed of any public meeting or hearing where this matter will be discussed as I would like to participate and voice my concerns. Thank you for your attention to this matter, I look forward to your response. Sincerely, Brian Dougherty.
When did you say you would be able to make a decision to let us know?
The decision further, further on the agenda. It can, it will either be approved, denied or postponed. Tonight, yes, yes. Yes, sir.
Lloyd Michael, Lloyd Debbie Michael, one six zero five five Pratt Road, basically across the street right next to Brian. Approximately six hundred and two feet, one inch from my front door is the proposed center line of the tower. My question with, the question I have, and I don't dispute the need for a tower. I do, I do dispute the fact that the tower company is gonna build it and only Verizon gets to use it. Because what's gonna, what's gonna happen across this township is every cellphone company is gonna want to build their own tower. And they're not gonna be of high quality, I mean, they're gonna get the job done, don't get me wrong. But I have a little bit of background in this. I would rather see something more significant in the center section of the land, around no houses, it doesn't bother anybody and possibly multi-lease or, so maybe AT&T could use it, maybe, maybe Verizon can use it. It is happening out there, it is happening. So, I think to build a tower to upset a whole bunch of people when possibly you're gonna get nailed again with, with somebody else and they're gonna show you another cloud map and that cloud's gonna be pink and this one's yellow about coverage and everything. So, I think if you guys are gonna do this, first of all, I think you're shooting, I think Armada Township is shooting their self in the foot. Couple of different reasons. Three hundred foot from the setback, from the, from the county easement, three hundred foot back is not back far enough, okay? It's not back far enough. It needs to be more in the center of a section of land or it's not bothering anyone. And there's no problem with that, the only disadvantage is for the, whoever constructs it's gotta put a little longer driveway in. But they can have access to wherever they want. But you're also taking a section of land that nobody will ever buy, okay? I know they're farming it now, I, I, you know, I, I know that's there, but there's a whole bunch of farmland in this township that's disappearing. Farmers get old, farming kind of goes down, there's no money to be made and we're nearing that now, we're nearing that now. Because I am, I am a grow, I'm a grower, I'm a container ornamental grower. But I am not seeing that section of land being developed. I mean, who wants to buy, who wants to buy a lot and have a cellphone tower behind it? Okay, I mean, they don't care if it's a half mile back, but I mean, you got a half mile from McFadden, almost, not quite. Half mile from Romeo Plank, half mile from Pratt, half mile from Reed. We can't put this thing more in the center of that property instead of three hundred foot off the ditch? Three hundred, nah, it's, I think it was a little, what I saw was, I, I believe three hundred, don't hold me to that, this is another thing. Three minutes to tell you guys this is not enough time. This is, this is not enough time and I'm in my busy season, so I can't sit down and write a six-page letter to you guys explaining everything that's on my mind. Now, I'm not, I'm not denying the need for it and I'm not against the need for it, I have a problem with the location. And I'm not saying that because it's close to my house, but I mean, you go down, go down in Macomb Township and look at the big towers. None of them are right on the road. They were all in there and there's development all around them. I think that's what you guys as, as a township board or the planning commission have to think about the future. I think you have to think about every corner in this township before all this stuff gets boogered all up and then you're trying to correct these problems twenty years from now, because twenty years will go by fast. So, my, my problem is the location, okay? Sure, I have to look at it, I know there's a need for it, but it's very rural out there and to have this thing that close to the road, I'm not, that doesn't make sense. It just, the location just does not make sense. And I'm not saying there's not location for it, but put it more towards the center section of the land, of the land, you know? And that way, nobody sees it. It's, it's, it's not that bad, it's, it's not that obtrusive looking at it, it's not, you know, something like that. By the way, you're, you're gonna lose that frontage on Pratt Road if for some reason, you know, you know what family circumstances are gonna happen and farmland needs to be sold off and a developer will buy it and he'll carve it into three acre lots. You're not getting a lot in front of the antenna, you're not getting the one next to it, you're not getting the one on that side. And as far as wetland, I got news for you, unless it's a gravel pits east of town, every frickin' acre in Armada is wetland unless it's tiled. I know, okay? So, it's all wetland, okay? And I would like to see what, what the township denotes as wetland versus what the state denotes as wetland. So, I, I just don't want to see the township shoot, I think in the long run, the township's gonna be shooting their self in the foot. I mean, they're gonna make that area just, that close to the road is just, you know? And I mean, are they trying to save, driveways are expensive, are they trying to save money on driveways? And why can't the tower company, which I'm sure Verizon is not gonna own this tower, the tower company is and they're gonna lease it to Verizon? And we hit Verizon for years, we got rid of them. Guess what, we never had a problem with AT&T. It's got to do with the antennas, so I, I realize the need for that. The problem is, can't this antenna, can't this antenna be shared so you're not, you don't have one everywhere? You know, because I mean, right now, you're talking about the northwest corner of the township. Okay, you, you got a crowd, a little bit of a neighborhood crowd here from the northwest town. What about the northeast corner of the township, what about the other, the other ends of the township? You guys are gonna be going through this, you guys don't get paid enough for this. So, you, you can do it, you know, you guys are gonna make the decision that you want. But when I, when I look at it, it just does not, and I, I have a construction background, it's not making sense, okay? Location is not making sense. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Just a point of order.
Yes.
Just to clear up a point, this is a three carrier tower, it's not a single carrier, so.
I just heard Verizon.
Verizon is on board, but it'll take two more.
Okay, so that's good, put it back far.
Yeah, we, we always make sure we have whole locations.
Lloyd, your address?
One six zero five five Pratt Road.
Thank you.
That's debatable.
Yeah, that's not.
You do all the research, by the way, it is gonna affect property values. It's not gonna affect our taxes, our taxable value, I can guarantee that.
I'm gonna continue, while you're writing that, I am going to, we do have another letter from Brian. I'm ready to express my concerns regarding the proposed installation of the five G's phone tower, this is, yeah. Is it, do you want me to read this one? Okay, all right, as long as you're good with that, it'll be on file, it'll be on record. Okay, I do have one other letter. This is from Debbie Michael, I hope this message finds you. Oh, okay, so we're, so you want me to go ahead and, I, I will read it. Okay, you're good. Okay, it'll be on file though, okay? All right, are there any other public comments?
Do you only get one public comment?
Yep.
Yes. Yes.
You brought up some interesting stuff that I researched.
Sorry.
And you really push your public comment to somebody else by a standard here?
We've never really done that.
We're not doing it.
We haven't. But you can, commissioners, okay.
Can we address some of the comments that were made or?
It's during board comments.
Okay, understood.
And are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, now we'll have our board comments.
Close public hearing.
Well.
Oh, no, right, sorry, you're right.
The commission never really had a chance to ask or to make any comments at the public hearing. Does anyone here have anything they'd like to say at the public hearing?
I would like to ask about the, I'd like to ask about the health studies. Do you have information, I'm sure you have a packet of information that's not in our documentation, to support the health risk of the tower?
Yes, I can make a couple of comments about that and I could get some information and email it to you, I don't have it with me. We adhere to all of the government guidelines, so the FAA, the FCC, they all have regulations that we need to adhere to. We also, you know, this has been studied by the American Cancer Society and the National, I'm forgetting the name of it, I'm sorry, the International Health Association and there's multiple agencies that have been studying the emissions and the health benefit or the health effects of the cell towers. And they have not found that there's an issue with them. And like I said, we do adhere to all FCC guidelines for frequencies to make sure that they are safe.
Okay, thank you, can you send us that information?
Yes, and I can do that so that it's available for the, you know, if it's a stipulation, make sure that you have it for the board meeting.
Yeah, you talked, you talked about the ANSI standard that the, the tower will comply with and the STM standard. So, I know, I know that that, that's correct for the tower itself, but what about health effects on the population?
Yeah, and I do have. I do have some information on that, so I will, I can email that over to Michelle tomorrow to make sure that you have it.
Thank you, I think there's controversy there, thank you.
Yeah, I understand.
Not just people, too, livestock, animals, I think that nature, wildlife.
The impact.
Specific to five G, this is a five G tower? Or does it matter?
It's private future, five G.
Okay, let's hold up, guys, please.
I'll mention that we have to do a very comprehensive environmental study to, as part of our government approval. I'll mention that we have to do a very comprehensive environmental study to, as part of our government approvals. And I mean, even to, like, we can only trim trees during certain months of the year because bats, they're protected. Same with the Michigan rattlesnakes, like, we have to make sure they're not nesting. Birds nest, you know, this won't affect the, a new construction, but when we're working on an existing tower, we have to make sure that birds aren't nesting on the equipment on the top of the tower before we go out so we don't disturb any. We are environmentally friendly as we can be. And we, again, adhere to all those government guidelines and we're often reviewed by the Michigan Department of, sorry.
The.
But yes, thank you.
She said talk about land.
Excuse me. That's.
I'll just, obviously, it's an intended public comment, but I will let you know this is an unlit tower, so.
It's what?
Unlit, so there's not going to be light up there shining. So I just, you know, it's not public comment, but I wanted to.
Thank you.
No. I also wanted to, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no.
So hate to bring up the regulations again, but just to talk a little bit about wildlife and nature. We are extremely regulated in that regard. Actually, the issue is that we attract too many birds.
You can cool the trans.
It's his time, sir.
We actually attract too many birds. That's actually usually our issue. So we actually do have, FCC has guidance, the FAA has guidance, EPA has guidance for what we have to do to make sure that we don't attract those birds. If it would make the township feel better, we can make this conditional on, we can put additional items up there like the owl to scare them away and keep them from nesting on our tower. So we are open to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
I know you guys, when you do this, you go with the ideal location from tower to tower. Did you ever look at the Blakes, putting it on the Blakes property in the back? I mean, it's not that far away and you have no neighbors.
I should probably stand here to answer your question, sorry.
It's more benefiting them than anybody, really.
Well, and I mentioned, just as a side note, I mentioned Blakes as an example of, I know that it gets very busy up here. I live in the area, so I, I know that that's, you know, a lot of usage at that time. And then, you know, hearing that it does impact some of the residents is one of the reasons I mentioned that. But it, so what, and just to explain how we come about the process, the location is, the RF engineers see that there are drop calls or there's lack of service in an area and they pinpoint generally a very small area for us to look at and see where we can put a cell tower. And then we also, you know, from there and, you know, it can be half a mile. They'll say, we need a tower here, you have a half a mile that you can work in. Then we have to review zoning ordinances and make sure, do the properties work with that zoning, you know? Putting a tower on those properties. And then the next step is, do we have entrusted property owners to work with us? Because, you know, if we don't, we, you know, can't build the tower there. And so, Blakes, it's approximately two miles from where we're at now. And that's just going to be too far to connect to the existing network. And one of the strategic things they're trying to accomplish is they don't want to create permanent dead zones or service that is being interrupted and not sufficient. So that's why we get a very small area to work within and.
Well, I'm just saying that the Blakes were more commercial type property.
Absolutely.
And they do, they do go back pretty far, almost early.
And I, well, you know, we were kind of on the edge of our search area with the property that we're on. So going to Blakes would be too far and would cause interference and I believe there's towers in that area.
Sure.
You are much more familiar with the area than I am.
Yeah, I get the little map.
Yeah, why didn't we get one of those?
Romeo Plank.
It's to the east, east, southeast.
Between Capeback and Romeo Plank.
Southeast.
Yes.
How far are these towers?
They go all the way back there.
They're half, they're a mile south of Rome. Yes, there is. That's where she's going to die at.
Amy? Okay, wait one second. You're good, Randy?
I'm fine.
Okay. Maureen had a question?
I know we're looking for coverage, but do we have the radio frequency in the EMF? Do we have a map like this that says the radio frequency in the EMF generated from that tower? Are we generating in the, in the, in the area or is it going up? Do we have that information?
It's like a sphere. The signals go in all 365 directions.
Do we have the, the power level, like, in a map so we can see how far it emits?
I don't.
For health risk factors.
Well, so in the package, there is a current coverage map that they keep referencing. And then there's the proposed coverage map. So if the power was put in, showing the quality of service change. As far as generally speaking, when they're developing that grid and things of that nature, where that exactly aligns is they can't be too close, they can't be too far to productively do that grid. But from a health standpoint, that's not included in this packet where that exactly goes.
Okay. But that was my, it was, my question is more, is related to health. Where, where is the zone of the EMF or the radio frequency? Do we have any way to show that visually illustrated?
I don't know.
You don't know, but maybe some technical information to support that.
I will have to ask RF engineers if they have.
Thank you.
It wasn't requested previously, so I will add that to my items to request and send over.
Seems like a doable thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, makes sense.
Commissioners, any further questions? Comments?
Sir? Thanks. How big is the parcel land that you're, that you're putting?
Randy? Randy, speak into your mic, please.
How big is the parcel? The owner's land, how big is this piece of land? Because the audience did say.
It says it on the app.
I believe it's a perfect.
I think it does, it says it on the.
So it's not that big of a parcel? Fourteen acres.
Okay. We need you to speak into the mic. That's, it's hard to get things recorded. Commissioners, any other comments? Questions?
Yeah, you said the tower is kind of on the edge of where you would really like it. Which direction would you go to be closer to where you'd rather be?
It's not, let me correct myself. It's not on the edge of where we would like it per se or. Thanks. I appreciate you seeing me here. What I meant by that comment was focusing more on, it's right at the border of where the parcel becomes wetlands. State designated wetlands. So adjacent to us is undevelopable, it won't be homes in the future, it's covered by large trees. So just from the standpoint of minimizing the impact on the community, that is something that we consider weighs in our favor.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? If we're done here, then a motion would be in order to close the public hearing at seven forty-eight? Oh, fifty-nine, sorry, my watch just updated. Need a new one. Is there?
Motion.
All second, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried to close the public hearing. Next on our agenda, we have reports and correspondence. We have the project status report. We have Hidden River, two buildings permits were finalled. Frontier Farm Market rezoning was approved by the township on seven nine twenty-five. Armada Center Self-Storage Engineering Escrow Deposit was received on six thirty twenty-five. Spalding De Decker, excuse me, is conducting their review. Romeo Rabbit Rescue, the township board denied the special land use at their July ninth meeting. Ordinance book audit, the last committee meeting was on August, Monday, August fourth. And then does, does anybody else have any other correspondence or any? DJ, you're usually good for one. No? Okay. Okay, if there are no further correspondence, a motion would be in order to receive and file reports and correspondence as presented. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. Next, we have new business. And first on there is the APC Towers Wireless Tower Special Land Use and Site Plan. So I guess first we need to address the special land use. If you want, Caitlin, go ahead. You want to?
Sure. So again, what we could consider during tonight is a recommendation to the township board on action. So that can be an action to approve, it could be an action to deny. If there's additional information, we need to then make a decision. Then we would state that specific information and then postpone and move from there. As part of that June thirtieth letter, so the total acreage of this parcel is fourteen acres in total. The leased area is about a quarter of an acre for where they're proposing to be. And so, as I mentioned during my previous comments during public comment, there are some different standards and we should review those standards in basis for our decision. And so, to support our approval, you would want to state all of the standards being in support. To justify denial, you would need to specifically state which one or multiple standards in the fact finding therein to justify a denial. So standard one is talking about the proposed special land use is located size and character that is harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood and is consistent with our zoning district. So we do allow these towers in our agricultural district. There are several separate single-family homes in the neighboring area. They're proposing it to be on this large parcel that's partly farmed. The proposed use would not be a full-time onsite staff. They do propose a different vehicle turnaround juncture, so in case they needed to approach it. And then due to the height, they do meet our height requirements.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That first one talks about it being in the center of a large parcel, which it's not really in the center of the parcel. It's closer to Pratt Road. But our ordinance talks about facilities being located a thousand feet from any public roadway. This is clearly not a thousand feet from a public roadway. It's on page out one twenty-eight under Wireless Communication Towers. This is special approval land use in a residential and ag district provided all facilities are located at least a thousand feet from any public roadway or located within five hundred feet of the Detroit Edison High Voltage Transmission Courtyard. I believe this one needs either required.
Let me pull that up so I can look at it with you.
Okay.
I mean, as far as standard one, it's, this is kind of, you know, it talks about being harmony. It's, there is quite a bit residential, only a few hundred feet across, across the road. It's only three hundred and forty-five feet back from the, from Pratt Road. Kind of a unique parcel that it's, looks like it's bound, you know, basically kind of cornered lot.
They have frontage on three sides.
And the backside is also on, yeah, it's, it's a unique parcel. And we did, we did have this happen, one other tower where it was fronted on three sides on radar ridge and we ended up having to move that because they couldn't meet the thousand-foot requirement.
Yep, so as part of that, standard's in there. It does talk about how it is at least a thousand feet away from any public, or again, within the high transmission line. So I apologize for.
I didn't see transmission lines, but that's sometimes hard to see.
Hang on, let me pull. That's what I was looking for.
It doesn't show.
To your crack, they would need to relocate that tower slightly farther back.
It looks like it could be accomplished just by moving it farther away from Pratt.
Yeah, right, being around that corner.
Because they're already a thousand feet away from McFadden, they're three hundred and twelve from Pratt. And they're one thousand three hundred away, over a thousand away from Romeo Plank. The depth of the parcel is, if you were to go south, they do have another six hundred and forty, or six hundred and fifty-nine feet. So there is room to move it farther back and then it bends over slightly and then has that three hundred and thirty-five feet. So the parcel could accommodate that thousand in neither direction.
Actually, it looks closer to Romeo Plank.
It's, it's.
Oh, because then on site plan, or site plan C S two, that's where it shows the center of the tower in relationship to the entire parcel as opposed to just the leased area.
That's what I was going, basically, that's my.
Sir, there is a thousand feet on all four sides.
So for Pratt Road, no, they're, they're short.
There's not, they're short. At the current location.
Pratt's three twelve.
It does not meet the special land use requirement, that's what we're saying.
All right, either way.
Sounds like it.
Yes? Sure.
We did submit to the ZBA to address that. We did submit to the ZBA to address that. I would ask that you confirm that for us.
The zoning board of appeals.
I don't have anything for that. That was never, like, applied for.
But your campaign is from.
There was a zoning, or the ZBA application and a variance that showed that that sucked you. I did not receive. Or you can make that. Because we would have to schedule, like, you would have to schedule another meeting like this with the ZBA to get that. We can do that after, like this. Okay. Yeah, I don't have anything.
You're in ZBA.
But they, they do have the right to apply for that.
Yes.
So, so that, so that would be something that would be an acceptable condition is, again, if they were to have that thousand-foot, or not thousand, that's seven hundred odd or six hundred odd setback from Pratt Road would be the requested variance.
Six eighty-eight. Right?
Correct.
Yep.
So are you saying that you're making it contingent upon the ZBA?
Well, I think part of it is, is that the applicant has indicated that they can address that either through their ZBA, they have the right to go that route.
They do.
Alternatively, they do have the ability on the property to relocate that that thousand feet away if that were.
Or both.
Needed. And so, or, well, they would pick one of those two options. So I think more or less, I, it's good that we pointed that out, that it was a compliance issue. But I think there is an answer somewhere in for that compliance issue.
So at this point in time, what would you suggest that the planning commission do?
So we can still talk about, as part of that special end use, that would be one of the conditions is that they would address the setback issue. So either they would be approved their variance, it would be a. Um, so either they would be approved their variance, it would be a somewhat difficult variance to receive. Um, they do have some wetlands that are protected by the state located on the site. Um, but they otherwise do have room on the property to relocate, um, it to be farther back from the roadway.
Or couldn't they be contingent upon getting the variance?
I would say it's solving the problem, so if they can, as an applicant, choose
To set it back.
If they're gonna move the tower location and set it back
Yeah, yeah.
Or get a variance or if they've denied the variance, they can still move it.
I got you.
So I think it's something that can be addressed and we could put as a condition, um, is the evaluation of that.
Yes ma'am.
Or we could postpone it this time until they can figure out exactly what they, what, what they would like to do and come back to us.
I don't, I don't think you need to do a po-, uh, it's your, you as a board can make that decision. If you would like to postpone, you're more than, um, able to, but there is a solution. Now, they get the variance or they don't, or they relocate it on the site, or they choose to uh, abandon the project and go to a different location or a lease agreement. Um, but there are different, um, site plan components, um, as far as the standards. So I don't know if you wanna continue to go through each of those, if there's any other information that the planning commission would like to and then evaluate it still as far as if this is the appropriate location. Um, we could still have that discussion too, cause I, I think they can solve that setback issue.
Yeah.
I think we should go through it soon.
You wanna go through, you guys?
Have a full picture of what we're looking at.
We'll go through? You wanna go through?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, then we'll go through.
Okay. Um, so the second standard is regarding the nature of the proposed use would not make vehicle or pedestrian traffic more hazardous. Um, so they're proposing a low intensity operation there, um, proposing their driveway off of Pratt Road. Um, and they would require all harmony, uh, permits through the roads, um, department at the county.
Thank you.
Three is talking about the proposed use, location, size, intensity or site layout, hours of operation would eliminate any potential nuisances associated with nearby uses regarding dust, noise, beams, vibrations, smoke or lighting. Um, so the applicant has indicated they're gonna have some building mounted lighting, um, that are gonna be downward facing and shielded. There is no lighting proposed at the top. If towers get so far, FAA requires that they put a light up there. That is not the proposed height of this tower. Um, they do propose some different landscaping around the exterior, those arborvitaries that are there. Um, and we can evaluate, um, compliance if that was something to be considered a contingency. Standard four is talking about the proposed use location, um, height of buildings, um, and structures. The landscaping that's proposed would not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development of the uses adjacent to that land or building and impacting those values. So as mentioned, um, it is proposed to be a hundred and seventy-five foot tower. Um, they would meet that setback at least of a hundred or a hundred percent of that, or a hundred and half percent of that tower. They would, to meet the requirement, they'd have to be farther away from Pratt Road. Um, they do propose a chain link fence with arborvitaries. Um, and otherwise on the property, there is undeveloped woodlands and, um, farmland area with residential nearby. Standard five talks about the proposed use is harmonious with the physical and economic aspect of the adjacent, um, uses. And so this proposed tower is located within agriculture but also residential, um, uses as well. Six is that the proposed, um, public convenience at the proposed location, so it is located off a major thoroughfare. Um, they do provide the information regarding that heat map, um, of sorts. Um, so, um, you can see that there are several orange or yellow areas and then there are some red, the darker red being the worst, yellow being not as great, green being good. Um, the towers themselves also have three of those little dots on them where the towers are. If they're red, that's showing that's the most load, as opposed to if you go yellow or green, that's indicating the load in that direction. Cause it's also directional, those towers and some of those capacities. So you can see off to the west, there is more yellow and red areas, um, as part of that heat map. Uh, seven is talking about the proposed use is designed, located and planned and is operated to maintain public health, safety and welfare. Um, so the proposed, um, operation meets all of those different permits other than, um, as we just mentioned, the thousand for Pratt, um, specifically. Um, when we look at the proposed turnaround, um, force of, um, safety vehicles if they needed to access the site that is provided, um, and their proposed height. I will make the note that, um, for a lot of different communities that bring up the health concerns, that has not been a winning argument for the appropriateness of a tower or not. Um, and so if we were to focus on public safety and welfare, um, we need to focus on some other factors. Um, otherwise, nobody would have a tower, um, if they could argue in some of those capacities. So just wanna be frank on that. Um, standard eight is that the proposed use is not detrimental or injury to the neighborhood within which it is located. The operation, um, for the future land use of that property, um, or surrounding area in that said zoning district is still harmonious with our zoning ordinance. So this area is intended to be agricultural preservation, um, in our master plan. Um, it is proposed to be agricultural with no residential, um, specifically there and preserving agricultural land. Um, the proposed health communication tower does not, um, propose any onsite staff, um, from a regular nuisance traffic standpoint from that intensity. Um, so those are the eight standards that we would be considering. Um, I would suggest that we could go through that and then if you, depending on that decision, we could then talk more about the site plan. Um, the site plan is more or less, um, relatively complete, other than providing some clarification regarding, um, site drainage. So different communities have different philosophies on this. They are proposing it to be gravel within the fenced area and then I believe it's a foot or so out of the fenced area for mowing purposes and maintenance of that facility. They're not proposing to trade that grade dramatically or do any major, um, topography changes. They updated that information to verify they're not proposing grade changes there. Um, other than installing some of that, um, surface material for that improved driveway, um, and removing a foot of that topsoil. Um, already previously mentioned the exterior lighting, um, as far as the, um, other improvements. Uh, lighting and then the planning commission has the right to require parking, but in other applications, we pretty much waive that for this type of intensity.
I see.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
I see you provided the, the maintenance necessary and the maintenance plan. So that would be one person, would be, how many trucks for the, um, consideration of a parking area is needed? And what is the frequency of that maintenance?
So after the initial construction, it's like a tech man comes out six times a year.
Okay.
We only have really people there for, you know, the routine basis as a company.
So So the inspection of the, of the corrosion and things of the, that, that you provided, um, to maintain the tower itself would be annual, you're saying? Or every three years?
It does date that.
Their inspection requirements are every five years and then it's also the course of, um, of that tower construction.
Mm-hmm.
That, that tower gets to be inspected and that inspection report will be provided to the towns of every five years.
Every five years.
And then if an additional, um, carrier were to locate on the tower, at that time a structural would be done to make sure that it's sufficient to accommodate the additional equipment. And then that would be also provided to your suspension.
Okay, so there's not a lot of parking involved in that every five years?
Nope.
And then you said every two months or six times a year, there's a tech out, just?
Just routine, got a van coming for the maintenance.
Okay. Just one vehicle, okay, thank you.
Commissioners, what are your wishes here? Go ahead, DJ.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not opposed to the, the tower. I mean, we'd be hypocrites, you know, we've all got cell phones and they've demonstrated a need for, um, this service in, in that area. But, um, according to our ordinance, and, you know, it's all about keeping the harmony of the area. Um, I don't think it's, um, appropriate to, to plunk this thing like right across this close to the road from this many residences. Um, I mean, I've got a cell tower in my backyard and my front yard, it's much farther than this. You do get used to them, but a few hundred feet, I don't think so. It's, I think, um, they're gonna have to come up with a better location, um, to meet the ordinance. Uh, it's, it's just, you know, there's a need and, you know, there should be a lot of the tower, but just not in that exact, it's, it's a plenty big parcel. I think they just need to, to move it.
Move it somewhere else on this parcel?
Yeah, on this parcel, yeah, on this parcel, just unfortunately it moves it away from these houses and goes to another house, but it still would be, at least it would, uh, be in, within the standards of our ordinance.
Any other commissioner comments or questions or?
I
Go ahead.
Question for you, um, is it a, um, come on up, I want explanation on the collapsing, you said, in case there's a failure to the structure? It, is it directional?
It interfaces.
No, but if the tower collapsed, it's supposed to buckle over, but being so close to the road, they would have it directional.
No, it's, it's gonna buckle in and it literally self-flaps.
Well, according to what he said, it folds over.
It buckles, so it falls within the fenced in area.
I beg your pardon?
So, got her?
Yes, please. I saw that.
You saw that?
Is this the one that?
So essentially, the way it's designed is that it buckles in the middle, so that way the fall zone, is what we call it, is within the fenced in compound, so it doesn't
And what's that, is it like with, okay, it's in the compound, okay, I beg your pardon. That's fine.
Absolutely, any other questions? I could talk about fall zone all day.
Well, no, I, I obviously misread that, you're gonna have it back. That's the one I was going off of actually, I had it here somewhere. Thank you.
DJ question for the planner, so in, in this case, um, they have options of the ZBA, which, I'm on the ZBA and we probably, the fact that there's so much other room, we probably wouldn't.
Yeah, it, it's not a very easy variance to get, um, because there is the room and the wetlands on the property are relatively minimal, especially when you look at where they are, if you were to follow the rear where they need to move, um, to that property.
So, yeah, and our, our decision here is to recommend to the township board, but in this case, um, if it's not the right location, we would just basically tell them to have to come back for a new location?
Um, so we have two different options, so if one of, one of our concerns is regarding the actual placement on this subject property. Um, that's something that we could say, um, one, that, um, articulate that to the applicant and then say if we are more comfortable postponing and wanna see where that tower would be, where that would end up being, um, we could do that. We also are part of site plan reviews, we wouldn't approve that tonight, um, with that location, um, relocation, we'd wanna know more. Um, you can also make the argument if you wanted to say a denial, because this whole parcel is inappropriate. You can make that decision as well. Um, if you were leaning towards the entire parcel isn't appropriate, I would suggest we deliberate towards that. Now you don't need to, you, if you do need to postpone, you need more information to make that decision, we can of course request that. Um, but I think there's that two different question.
So the, we, we postpone for a new location or a variance? Is it gonna be the action?
Um, you want to, it would be postponing to, um, see a revised plan where the proposed tower is farther away from Pratt Road. That's how I would word that, because it's still in compliance the other two ways, but it's not from Pratt Road and that's where the residents are. That's the harmonious issue, that's the nuisance issue.
Okay, so a motion would, could be in order to, um, postpone this until the applicant is able to meet the thousand foot requirement from Pratt Road?
Yeah.
Are you making that motion?
Nope, I'm just looking at the actions.
Okay.
It's everybody better.
Okay.
What it would be the argument that this, this process would be, yeah, I think the argument is strong enough, inappropriate.
I can't be that leading.
Oh, what were you, what, what would be the argument?
I can't hear you, I can't hear you.
Well, I was questioning the, if, I understand DJ's concern that if they relocated without the same parcel, um, so it didn't have, so it was within our special, our variances and our ordinances. But what would be our argument against the use of the parcel entirely, entirely? No, it's not, it's not the same.
They can meet it on this parcel, it's
Yep.
They're meeting, yeah, so I don't wanna use
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't seem like it's necessary, but they could move it and relocate it.
Okay, well.
May I have that paperwork? I beg your pardon, this is the one I have. I thought it was the same. Thank you.
Microphone, please.
I have no objection coming back if you need to postpone tonight to kinda figure out what your options are regarding conditional, special use and zoning variance and how they interplay. I, I do think Caitlin did a fantastic job of leniing it out well. I would like to keep my opportunity to go to the ZBA over for the variance.
Well, compliance would be getting a variance. So by using that word compliance, variance would be in compliance, so you don't have to specify specifically. Um, or they would move that thousand foot if they're denied that. So if they, keeping the word compliance for that, we're addressing both.
Yep.
I'll make a motion, postpone the special land use for the, um, oh, I wanna be official here, uh, the APC tower, um, to allow them to come in compliance with the thousand foot requirement from Pratt Road. Okay.
No second that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is?
I'm gonna oppose and I'm gonna give a reason. Um, I feel it, the parcel is not the right parcel for it and that's the reason I voted no.
Thank you, Randy. Okay. This paperwork. Okay, so next.
Thank you, great for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your input, it's appreciated.
So most likely, and of the, I see there was quite a few people on this notice list, they'll all be noticed again if they're, when they
The township met our obligation as far as the public hearing, um, for this. If they do go for a, a variance through the zoning board of appeal, they will get another notice. Those, again, within three hundred feet of the subject property get that notice letting them know of the time and date. As far as continuation of, um, the special land use in our discussion with planning commission level, they would not get officially noticed by that.
So if they move the tower to us a thousand feet back, there's not another notice?
Correct.
We've already, we've met the public here.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, but that is something that we do post our agenda online, it's over a week ahead of the meeting, so you can always check the agenda. It would be under, um, unfinished business. Um, typically, um, I, I believe variance meeting, that's the
That's ZBA.
Name. Okay, so I would say, um, you do need fifteen day notice to do the, before the ZBA. So you're not, you're looking probably in August, maybe early September. So I would say having the answer to the variance would not happen to by our September planning commission meeting. It would more likely be October, we would have an answer unless the applicant re, decide, decides to just move the tower. But, um, I would say that September, October, um, October is more likely the date that we would be. But you can always check the agenda, that's available online a week ahead of the meeting. Um, you can always call the township hall too, um, prior to the meeting and, um, they can let you know if that's on the agenda or if it's not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And also, just a heads up, our September meeting will be the first Wednesday of the month. Um, and next on our agenda is changing our meeting dates to the third Wednesday. That's something that we have to vote on, so October's would most likely be the third Wednesday of the month. But that's, we still have to vote on that, but just a heads up on that.
And the public can comment on that, um, you would just do it under a public comment earlier on in the meeting, um, as opposed to holding another hearing like we did. So you'd still be able to comment just earlier in that meeting. So you'd still be able to comment just earlier in that meeting, essentially when you did.
The first set of public comments.
Now, all the information that they're gonna provide to you for like the health concerns, the noise vibration, the wildlife, uh, interaction, are you gonna be able to access that?
You can, you can ask for that, um, information with the township hall, um, same thing with the revised site plan, you can easily get accessible to that at least a week before that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And the lights, how much, how much light it's actually emanating, so how will it affect our sleep patterns? Things like that, what's the studies on the lights that they're using around these towers? Um, is it gonna affect the way we see our stars at night?
I don't, they, they said it wasn't gonna be lit.
But, so the, so, so the, at the floor level of the facility, there will be some downward facing light, so that means you will not see the bulb
It's not going to be lit at all?
and that lighting emitted, it's meant for, I'm pretty sure it's building code, you have to have an entrance or exit of a building, you have to have a picture. So we're gonna verify that those are downward facing and shielded, um, so they should not go very far at all.
It shouldn't affect anything.
Well, you got plants all around it too.
That's correct, there are also our abilities.
And the airplanes, one of the airplanes, you know, the tower's a hundred eighty feet.
Those lights are only as, they're.
Okay.
They're not on twenty percent.
Alright.
Just as the tech needs them, they return them.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our agenda, and next we have, on the agenda, the changing of the planning commission meeting dates. Uh, the township board has requested that we move our dates to the third Wednesday of the month, starting in October. This way they have time to receive and review items from the planning commission that require their approval. I don't know how everybody feels with that, if everyone is good with that, then a motion would be. Wow, how do you feel on that, go ahead.
I just, I think the meetings have always been the first week forever, and the public knows that, and, and you know, that's, you know, I.
If I can speak to, I know, does everyone know why it's being recommended?
Yes. Yeah, because the meetings are too close together.
Is it your fault?
Yep.
No, no, I mean, I mean, um, so one of the reasons procedurally it's being recommended to change is because when we're looking at, um, material coming from the planning commission and going to the township board, um, there's not even a full week to have our decision recorded and then move to the township board, and so the, the reason it was considered to move it after is then there is more weeks to then make sure anything that goes from our planning commission has sufficient time to be evaluated, updated, and then go to the township board for action. So it's attempting to be more streamlined from one, going from planning commission to township board, that's the purpose.
But when we get our packet on Thursday, we're, we're the ones doing all the studying, all they have to do is approval of what we said.
We get a week. Yeah.
But they have to look at the packet themselves to make it.
Other than they like to study it too, I guess, yeah.
But what I'm saying is, we're doing all the work.
Well, well, they still have to.
If we get our packet on Thursday, and in my, my, you know, that's less than a week too.
Right. And their, their meetings are like sometimes a half hour, like they could just do it at the meeting. I, I.
I'm not Caitlin.
I'm, I'm, in a relayer of the, that was the.
Their, their excuse is, it's all your fault.
So that's the desire of the township board, that's what they're communicating, that's, that's the reason it's being triggered.
The worst case is they'd have five weeks, if they didn't have time, it would just go to the next.
But then, then the applicant has to wait also then, right?
Correct, you could.
Yes.
So it's a catch twenty two.
That's right.
So what do you see, what do we save it, what, we save an applicant what, two weeks or something by the change in date?
Um, well, so as opposed to them skipping always the prep, so instead of, let's say if we need action tonight, instead of waiting to August, they'd have to wait until September's township ordering. So you could, procedurally, that's what you could do, so that's, that's.
So, okay, so we're gonna be, we're gonna be the third week?
Correct.
So then that's the fourth. You're only saving a week or something, aren't you?
Not even.
Kind of week?
You're, you're saving more than a week, in between wait time.
A week.
Saving two weeks?
Cause it's difference between, um, June to April.
Third and then, then they have six weeks as opposed to if you moved it after, then you would have it be three weeks.
Unless it's February.
So, again, it is your decision to make, um, but that's, I'm just explaining, that is the rationale, why.
Are you available?
I'm available both nights, doesn't matter to me.
The third Wednesday. This also, I guess, I don't have a problem with this, changing it, but I don't have a problem keeping it, but you gotta remember, you have New Years. And you have like Memorial Weekend, you have the Fourth of July, you have, uh, well, you never know about Christmas, uh, Labor Day, all in, you know, we, we hit all these holidays all the time.
So how does that, how does that play into the holidays, great Caitlin, do we even consider that?
Not all the time.
Uh, you can, I mean, um, uh, the only thing is, I don't know how many holidays are actually on the third, uh, Wednesday, um, but again, if you're looking at
I, I wouldn't. Would you? But on which bus to work, yes.
some communities when you get to Thanksgiving, so I have a client that they move for only November and December, they move a week ahead.
Right.
So they are not the week of the holiday, so you can make those decisions to change your s- to officially have your schedule be that way if you're worried about the only two holidays that I know are later in the month, but usually there are the, there's Thanksgiving and then you have Christmas. And so you can say for those two months, we need the first Wednesday of the month, you could, you could do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Switch gears.
But it is your choice to make.
I mean, we have a whole packet that we go through, with several different things on it, we give them maybe one thing every now and then, to, to study. But we have to change their date because of that one thing, that they, that you grew.
I miss very few meetings, cause it's always the first week.
Yeah.
I can go either way.
Well, okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to keep the meetings as they've been for a hundred years on the first Wednesday of the month.
Second? I'll second that.
Wanna do, wanna do a roll call?
Definitely. Cause we don't actually have much paperwork up.
Can I vote no for that?
Oh goodness, you guys.
Was there a second?
Joe.
Yeah, Joe seconded.
I did.
Alright, okay, we'll do a roll call.
Oh, well, yeah, so we repeat what you said to your motions.
Uh, my motion was to keep the dates, uh, as they've always been for a hundred years, um, the first Wednesday of the month.
Hundreds. Ninety-eight.
You don't have to put a hundred years on.
Well, that's right.
Tradit- traditionally.
How many times can you read the thing?
Okay, alright, so we have a motion, we have a second, let's do, I guess we better do a roll call, cause this is gonna be gonna, roll call.
Okay, uh, where are you?
Well, seven.
Sure, yes.
No. Me, no.
No is to keep, keep it as is?
Keep, no, no, no is to change it.
No, no is changing the date.
No, it's changing it, so, it's to keep it the way they are.
The motion on the floor is to keep it the first Wednesday, so if you vote yes, you are confirming you would like it on the first Wednesday.
Okay.
I'm the yes.
Curious.
Um, yes.
Jabar?
Yes.
And, for me?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried.
Or we're gonna get fired except for both.
Can I change my vote? Yeah, okay, so that's done, alright.
That's a stand.
So next we have on our agenda, um, the T-Mobile administrative site plan that we added.
What is that?
Um, so for this, um, so one of the, um, applications that's come in, they weren't able to meet the turnaround time for their second site plan review, um, they needed, um, more information, and so I withheld it, um, making sure we had sufficient site plans. Um, one of the things, due to the nature of the site plan, um, it is an existing tower, they're proposing to add more equipment on top for co-location. They're also proposing to add, um, equipment on the floor to support that, it's still within the leased area, it's essentially extending the gravel, some additional equipment. And so, um, they do have the option to be an administrative review, and so what you would be considering tonight is to do that administrative review. I have since they've res- they've sent us the revised site plan, um, I have looked at it, they have addressed most of the things, the only thing that was outstanding was drainage parking. Um, I wanna note on their decommissioning plan, um, associated with it, and there's a, some other minor informational components. But otherwise, that's what's up for our discussion as it comes to you, or the administrative route, the administrative route is myself, Beth, and then I believe the vice chair, um, is still DJ, am I correct?
Yes, DJ is.
Um, so the three of us would meet, um, review the site plan for its integrity, ensuring that it meets all of the compliance, and then it would be processed administratively. But they don't need a site or a special land use, cause they're not increasing it in the way that requires special land use for their co-location.
Why do you, why do you wanna have, uh, parking?
Irwin.
Why, why are you wanting parking? You said.
Um, I'm not saying I want parking, I'm saying that it's a compliance issue, um, so the planning commissioner, that subcommittee has the right to require parking. We don't typically require parking for utility, um, type uses of this nature, um, I don't think you would, but that's why I just mentioned it.
I mean, if it was just a site plan review and they're just changing, or adding to the tower, the services, but if you do any kind of modifications to the land, I would think it would come back here, no?
That's up for your discussion, that's why it's in front of you tonight, so you have, so because they're so minor in nature, you have the right as the planning commission to waive it to be administrative.
And or building.
Um, or you could say you would like to see it back to you, and not proposing any major structures, so not increasing building, but just more equipment within a fenced area.
I.
It's just, just an upgrade of the tower, they have the extra little box room on the ground.
Correct.
Is it going to be profitable then?
I don't know how, I don't know how we do administrative pieces of that.
Um, they're adding an additional service providers, um.
Doctor, may I? But they're sharing it.
But they're sharing it.
They're sharing the power.
They're co-locating.
Yep.
I don't know, I, after the, the crowd that we had tonight, I, I think it would be important to have it come to the planning commission. In case there's neighbors that have any questions, um, on any updates on the site plan, or if they have any comments, or wanna speak with, uh, was that T-Mobile, I believe? That's, that's my opinion, I think.
What do you think, DJ?
I think, you know, whole point of the orange is to have co-locations, to have less towers, and make it more, you know, easier, easier for the, uh, applicant to go ahead and do that.
Well, either way, they still have to have the site plan and everything, and it would just be, they would come before us.
Yeah. Right, they, but it's still gonna be reviewed by the planner to make sure that there's, up to snuff, so.
As well as the chair of the PC and the vice chair, so it takes those three to waive all of it.
And if it looks fishy, we'd kick it right to the planning commission.
Right.
I mean, if it's, something significant on it though, are you guys gonna?
It's not considered significant.
You don't, you haven't seen the plans yet, have you?
Yes, I have, I've revised it, I've reviewed it twice.
Oh, okay.
It's literally a few, um, cabinets that are being added to the floor.
Do they have these too, see it?
No, cause I think you can administer it, cause they needed to have sufficient plans of an update.
I mean, it's kinda hard to see if it's not sin- significant, that, uh, without seeing any plans. I think you should have let them know what it was.
Or us maybe have a copy of the plans, so we could make the decision by looking at it to see if we had any.
I mean, it's kinda hard, yeah, I believe you, but if there's something on there that's minute, that needs some kinda.
Um, I mean, this talks about new towers, our ordinance, I don't, I don't think there are, I don't even know, does it address co-locations when they come back?
No, I don't think it does.
It does encourage it, um, so then, it, under the, um, site plan review requirements, um, that's where they have the administrative process, and so the applicant advocated
Encourages, but, yeah.
Yeah, encourages it, but.
that they aren't proposing any buildings, but they are proposing structures, and so I said that you need the blessing of the planning commission to get that admini- to get that waiver, not just, I'm not building a building, I don't have to go.
But what's the difference between a structure and a building?
Um, so a building is enclosed with a roof and.
And what structure are they, cause you said they were putting in a structure.
Yep, so they're proposing a cabinet, so nobody can go in it.
So there are machinery cabinets?
Yeah, for, to, what's already on site essentially, but need more because there's more on the top part of the tower. But if you're not comfortable, that's something, again, you can say we'd like to see it in person as part of our site plan, that's fine.
So it's like a prefabricated box that they're just gonna sit next to another box, basically, to, to testing?
Yep.
Well, seeing one person says yes and one person says no, I think we should have a board vote on it. I mean, if they were both yes, I would have no problem. Seeing one has concerns and, and I guess DJ has a concern too, but he thinks he can handle it.
I just, I, I always listen to the planner.
You do?
Like I say, it's a, it's a co-location with a cabinet, I mean, that's what, that's what our ordinance is encouraging, the co-location, make it so that it's reviewed properly by the, you know, and, and just
Yeah, if they, if you guys see something.
sign off on it, yeah, if we see something that's weird, like, hey, the fence is moving, well, okay, now just let them.
Okay.
Well, and it's.
If you guys see something that's not right, send it to us.
So they, they are increasing the fenced area because the equipment though is there, they're adding the fenced area, so I'm trying to make sure I'm, I'm articulating it correctly, so I don't wanna
Okay.
I know, yeah, and that's what we need.
misrepresent, so, um, they are expanding some of the fenced area with the equipment, cause there's not enough space at the bottom, to add the equipment within the current fenced in area.
On the, okay.
Uh, but it's still within their leased area for that development.
Oh, it's, okay, so it's in the leased area, but the fence isn't big enough, typically the fence is very small, right.
Correct.
The fence will be moved.
Correct, they keep it more tight to it.
So the minor missing fences within any non-residential, so that's just, that's right in the ordinance, that fences in a non-residential development or district is a minor amendment that the administrative review can do, so.
I'm fine with that as well, let the administrative review deal with it.
Administrative review. I'm okay with administrative review.
Well, somebody make a motion.
I'll make it, to make that, uh, administr- uh, that, uh, administrative review, uh, prove, for any site plan, for that matter.
Make.
For the T-Mobile site plan.
No, it's like, why can't we?
No, it's just.
Well, it's, well, just for the T-Mobile one, so, it, it, so because there's, um, an awkwardness, I would say that it's not just,
Just that.
Well.
Um, it's not just because they're excluding the fence area, I think that because they're proposing the structures, I said, we really need the blessing of a planning mission, these are structures, so that's why it's being brought to you.
I understand. Why can't we just make it a rule of thumb, and just make a motion for that?
We're gonna change it with our zoning ordinance update.
Or any time.
Yeah, it's coming.
That's why, okay, alright, then you can modify it then, then, very good. Then, yes, let me change it.
So, so you wanted to make it to, to T-Mobile?
For T-Mobile. Yes, to modify their fencing administratively, to put their cabinets in.
Okay, is that all you needed?
Yep, well, do we need to vote on it?
I can see, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it then.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Hi, Robert?
No.
DJ?
Yes.
Uh, Patrick?
Yes.
Jabar?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda, we have PC Projects Agricultural Business Text Amendments. It's yours, Caitlin.
Okay, so, um, essentially, um, what's highlighted in yellow, um, are things that I changed in content wise, um, I'm gonna try to make this not confusing, um, because I'm deleting reference content in some areas, I'm not proposing to delete the terms, um, so on page four, um, one of the concerns that was mentioned in the subcommittee format is actually allowing event barns as their own use, um, they, um, preferred, um, rather that that's addressed during the zoning ordinance update, when we're playing with all the different uses together and talk really about what's appropriate, not appropriate, so that's really the substance change that, um, between all of our different drafts since the public hearing. Um, that's the proposed policy changes, we're not going to specifically list out event barns as a special land use that's allowed in our ag district, rather than just SAA or through agro-business. The other content changes on page eight, uh, where we stipulated specific event barn requirements, because we don't wanna itemize the use at this point, it's not going to be specifically in this text amendment. And then for definitions, the black content. And then for definitions, the black content. On page nine and ten.
I know, I'm trying, hang on, I'm going, all right, go.
So, the terms that are highlighted yellow that are black, I'm proposing to remove from the draft, but I'm not moving them from the zoning ordinance. So those terms were originally put in there to be more of a placeholder, so then when we talked about definitions, everything was in front of you, rather than jumping to all the different things. So ultimately, if you were to adopt this tax amendment and I convert it to ordinance form, these would not be here because we're not proposing to change. Um, so that's those terms, the only term that I removed that we drafted is event barns because we're no longer itemizing that out separate, so I don't wanna add a term that we're not gonna define under uses and then have this weird, um, we have the use, but we don't want the use.
You confused me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Okay, so I see, so you got ag use, ag business, bank of hall and building, you are taking those out, or you?
So I'm taking it out of the draft, but it's staying in the zoning ordinance, we're not proposing any changes to those definitions.
Taking out the draft, okay.
So.
This page, and then she's gonna keep it in the zoning ordinance for you to use.
Because I don't wanna put it in our text amendments that says, hey, we changed all these terms.
Yeah.
We actually didn't change all of those terms, we changed three terms.
I gotcha.
So they're just staying where they are, okay.
So that's what I'm, that's what I was trying to clarify, and that's why in the last versions you just saw it removed, is we weren't proposing changes to it, and still don't propose changes, I'm just removing it from this draft.
I gotcha.
Just for the track.
Same with page ten, too?
That's correct, other than the red font, again, we're, um, uh, removing the, um, event barn, I don't need that definition anymore, um, specifically, but we're still adding that seasonal kitchen term, we're still adding, um,
All right. So from the.
Or removing ancillary or ancillary use, um, because we're using the term accessory, um, rather than two terms that mean the same thing. So, um, and I did talk to Steve prior to this meeting, um, he said that, um, a lot of the, that was one of, he was the newest.
Steve who?
Um, or other.
Nikko. Nikko.
Oh.
Um, and so, um, he had indicated that some of the things he has concerns about, we're gonna address during the zoning ordinance update, um, we're talking about how all the uses interplay together. Um, so with that removed, that was his major issue, doesn't love every component of how much is changing and, um, some of the nuances to it, but he's willing to live with it.
So, you wanna discuss what you don't like, or?
Sure.
Okay.
You ready for me?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, the definition for accessory, accessory use?
Yes.
That definition, uh, of, you know, building or portion that's customarily incidental subordinate to the principal use of land, isn't that the same thing as adjunct?
Ancillary?
Ancillary use?
No, this accessory use, it's talking about being subordinate, customarily incidental subordinate to the principal use, which is the definition of adjunct, which is under seasonal kitchen facility, and that's the only place you use it, why aren't we just using the same language that we have a definition for and just saying, under seasonal kitchen facility, that it's an accessory use? Instead of putting in a, a word that's no, unnerveous in the zoning ordinance.
All right, so you're proposing to change.
Seasonal kitchen facility, where it talks about food as an adjunct service on the premises, which, if you look up that word, is basically means accessory, which, which.
Yep, so, no problem, yep, we can change that to accessory, just so, like you said, it's, it makes, is an exact replication, I understand.
That's what we have. It's not like the word.
Right.
Never used in your life.
I agree.
Everyone's got their preference, that's fine.
I just wanna make the ordinance so everybody can.
That's it? Um, yeah.
But it's easier to follow, I hundred percent agrees, it is easier to follow.
I just, I think that time reading. So this, what, so what are we doing, this, we're.
So the next step, we already held the public hearing on it, so the next course of action would be that the planning commission make a recommendation to the township board. To approve it, deny it.
And this is when we're gonna prove ahead of the full reboot, right?
Correct, so the next step would technically, you should convert this to ordinance form, um, so, because to amend an ordinance, you need an ordinance. Um, that's pretty simplistic, um, language to put together, um, and then it goes to them for review and approval.
Will there be a bigger, grander plan when the, of this, when the ordinance is redone, or is this gonna be?
During, um, oh, um, I guess I thought there was a time where I could just do a miscellaneous update, um, hmm. Maybe I'll say it during public comment number twelve? On the agenda?
The last one.
Yeah, um, I'll mention it during public comments, um, I was gonna give an update on the Parks and Rec plan, that project, as well as the zoning ordinance project, so, that was already in my plan.
Okay.
Okay, so on, on this, though, how do, what do, what do we need to do, how, what, um, the ever?
So, you're more or less comfortable with the language, uh, motion that would be considered is to recommend adoption of the proposed agro-business text amendment, uh, with the revision regarding seasonal kitchen facilities to change adjunct to accessory?
And that, that's all that that would be, that's.
Yes.
I think we worked on this a lot, I think I could make that motion. So I'll, I'll propose a motion to update the, um, agr- article eight, agricultural preservation district text amendments?
Um, so you're making a recommendation to the township board to adopt the agro-business text amendment?
I'm making a recommendation to the township board to adopt the agro-business text amendments as indicated on draft six, with the addition of changing the word adjunct to accessory for kitchens.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
We worked on that a lot for.
Motion is carried, that was one, no?
No, I, should I?
Aye, okay, motion is carried.
I don't think anybody's involved with this one.
It's a tough one.
Come on.
It's important.
Yep.
How certain things are.
All right, next on the agenda, actually Caitlin, I'm just gonna let you go ahead and talk about Parks and Rec first.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Parks and Rec plan and.
Um, so, um, as you may recall, earlier this spring, we talked about, we would do the Parks and Recreation Plan update, and we said, when we weren't busy, we would meet and talk about Parks and Rec. Um, we haven't quite had that happen, um, other than purposely saying, let's take a break in July. Um, and so, with the Parks and Recreation Plan, uh, we do need to have that public hearing and adoption before January of next year, to not miss out on a year of funding through the DNR. Um, and so that's important, just to have the full life of the plan, because as soon as you adopt it after that and don't submit, you lose out on a year that you're eligible. So, that's my hard deadline is to hold the public hearing, more or less have it adopted by December, so then everything can be sent by the beginning of February. Um, so, um, either way, regardless of what's on the agenda, I do need to get moving on that, so we do have two meetings of consent, and then we would hold the public hearing. Um, so the September meeting would be when we would meet to talk about the first chunk of the Parks and Rec plan, pretty much what you have now, and just refreshing it based on the information we're able to collect. Um, the second component is that, one of the public engagements that are required, um, by the state, we chose to do an engagement, um, um, engagement conversation with our community. And so, in talking with the township, we selected September seventeenth um, to be the public engagement date, um, the township said that they would be able to help me find those individuals within our community that are involved in sports, um, those different organizations. Reach out to the schools specifically, invite them to come to this event. Um, we're proposing that we would start, um, the township board is meeting that night, um, but I was proposing we'd meet an hour ahead of them, I believe they start at eight, we'd start at six.
They start at seven.
Seven.
Seven, sorry, um, they start at seven, we would start this community meeting at six. Um, so that way, we would be able to, um, have a community discussion, it's not meant to be a standard meeting, um, a lot of people find that very intimidating. Um, and so, the purpose is to have it be a very last conversation, um, essentially to get very, um, specific information on what do we want in our parks plan, what do we have deficiency in? And so I highly encourage the planning commission to come to that meeting, we'll be creating that flyer, um, getting that together, um, and start advertising it.
So, will the planning commission be up here, or would the township board be up here?
No, you're gonna be in the audience, I don't want anyone on the diocese where it feels like it's a meeting, super formal, it is meant to be a community conversation event, so.
Okay. And so you'll be in charge?
I will be facilitating the discussion.
You'll be, okay.
Here in pizza.
Oh, no. I'm not going.
Oh, no, um, I, I enjoy doing these, um, and so.
That'll be fun.
We, we actually have two different parks, are you gonna be doing both parks?
So we, I'm for, I'm facilitating the township's parks assets, um, so the village has their own Parks and Rec plan, is my assumption?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the one on Armada Ridge.
Um, yes, both are part of that inventory.
I'm about to.
Did the township even meet in the week?
Yeah, they did, they moved it.
So I don't think we've officially put on the township website yet that meeting, um, so that should be coming soon. Um, and then we're specifically gonna reach out to some community members in our community, make sure that they can come, um, and invite them to give that very pointed feedback is our goal. Um, so then, after that meeting in September, we would then meet in October, go over the remainder of the plan, which is your goals, objectives, and your action plan. Um, the biggest thing is with Parks and Rec plans is it should be a wish list, we're not hoping to change it in the next five years, so if we want anything, we put it in the plan, so we can say, we actually plan to put this here, please give us money to fund it. Um, so it is a, it is literally a dream plan, not like your master plan, um, but this is a, everything you think really you would like to see in your community.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, and we'll see if we can get it done. Um, and then after that, we would schedule the public hearing, it has to happen thirty days, or they get thirty day notice of that, so we're hoping then, um, if we have that September, October, sometime November, December, we could choose when that meeting is, um, and then it would go to the township board for adoption, if that has to happen in January, that's not a big deal, um.
December's still okay?
December's still okay, um, but we need the township board to adopt it before, um, uh, I.
January.
Ideally, it's true, in Dec- in December, but you can do it in January, too, there's enough time between them, um, we just, it's due the first of Nov- um, February. So you wanna not be the last one submitting at twelve o'clock at night, um, to make sure you hit that deadline.
Question for that, why can't we use the, the previous year years, why do we have to update it before, uh, January?
Um, so, it's how the DNR accepts plans for grant funding cycles, so every February is when you have to submit your plan to be eligible for that year. And if we don't submit it in February, we're not eligible for this cycle.
I'm sure. You sure?
I'm a hundred percent certain.
You, we planned this as another meeting.
Because they said to me, they, and if you don't resubmit it, you can still utilize the previous years.
So we're working off of your current Parks and Rec plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're not throwing that out, no, we're, we're building off of what you already have.
You did it, because you, you brought, you put all the work in, so that's.
I know.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're just updating your current plan.
All right, very good.
Um, and so, but you.
I'm sorry, I'm definitely.
That's okay, but it, it, they're five-year lives, and they do regulate that, you have to have a five-year valid plan to be eligible to fund it, so.
Yeah, yes, you're right, okay, I didn't hear that part.
So, um, so that's our tentative timeline for the Parks and Rec plan, um, so we're gonna get that done before the end of the year, two additional meetings of content, they should be pretty straightforward. And then the next, uh, project is our zoning ordinance, so we officially have completed the audits for the zoning ordinance with the subcommittee. Looking at finishing the Parks and Rec plan, some of the different sites, it's important that when we're looking over those drafts, that we're more or less together, um, because we're not gonna review the entire ordinance in once meeting. Um, I recommend that we start in January or February at the planning commission level, reviewing those drafts. One thing that I've, um, worked with, with several other communities is not providing a redline version because of how many random changes happen, and provide you the audit that shows the sections that we went in and modified, or referenced modifying. And then show you what the content is now, you can still obviously go to the original one, but rather than showing you the track change version, which usually, some cases doubles the draft that you're looking at. Um, one of the most important things is that it reads the way you want it to now, what happened in the past and how it previously was, is of course importantly build off of that. Um, but it's really important that it reads how you want, and I find that communities are able to articulate exactly what they want when we do it that way. Um, so I do appro- I do propose approaching that project this way, you still have the audit list, which provides a summary, based on the committee, what they propose. I'm gonna highlight sections that had major philosophy changes, um, and then anything that the subcommittee said, you know, we really wanna talk to the planning commission, see their opinion on it. And if there's anything in the draft that you say, I'd like to tweak this, we'll obviously stop and talk about it. But that's the proposed plan, is to restart that in January, February, because we need that content to be closer together, to be more effective.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on that? No, we're good, all right, so we're gonna move on, public comments, are there any public comments?
No.
Yes. It's been a few years since I had to deal with township government, but as far as a variance, I mean, these people, I'm, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna predict that they're gonna go for a variance. The variance gets turned out, then they're gonna move it, but who reviews the variance, is it you guys?
The zoning board of appeals.
The zoning board of appeals.
Um, so it's five, five.
Who hears on the zoning board of appeal?
One member.
Okay, all right, um, in, in that process, you know, I was always taught that if you need to get a variance from a zoning law, that typically you got the variance because there was no plan B, plan C, or plan D.
Like I said, it's a very difficult variance to achieve, we're being very transparent about that, and our, and our ZBA is well-schooled.
Okay. Exactly, exactly, so they. So, they don't even need to go for a variance, they can, they can save time and paperwork by moving the thing a few hundred feet this way and going back a thousand feet.
They have.
That's right.
They sure could.
That's, you know, we, we can't come in here and say, no, because, very hypocritical, because of this doggone thing, which I hate, by the way. Um, I, I understand that, like I said, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just against, you know, I, I'm sure none of you have a cell tower six hundred and two foot away from your front door, you know, and that's where this thing is, this, that's where, that's exact, I'm gonna be looking at it, six hundred and two foot, one inch. And I, it's just kinda ridiculous at this point, it's only ridiculous for a handful of us, but guess what, there was a whole bunch of people here that they thought was ridiculous, from the other end. It's just on top of the road and just too, too over, and I, I appreciate you guys saying, hey, let's, let's follow those, let's follow the ordinance, which is a thousand-foot setback. Let's, let's do that, there's, and I'm all for variances when there is no plan B on certain things, on certain things.
They have, they have the right to apply.
I, I asked for a variance one time and got it, and I cannot remember what it was, because I was gonna use it for an example.
But, but there are standards, and our ZBA is very schooled, they will follow those standards, and what they're asking is difficult.
Yep. Okay. And, and the other thing is, no offense to the gentleman from the cell phone tower, he, he labeled that land as, as useless. I said, well, then why do you wanna put a cell phone tower on it if it's no good for, you know, it, it just, it has no, there's nothing wrong with that. If you came up here, if I owned that land, and my neighbor does, if I came up here and, and hit the building department with a, a good print and an open checkbook, they would give me a building permit for it, to dig a basement. You know, I mean, it, the land is buildable on, and I don't think, it, inside the woods is gonna be considered wetland, and I, I don't know if you need a state assessment for that, or whatever.
Um, so the Eagle already has their wetline, or wetland portal, um, and so yellow.
Okay, all right, yep. I did a lot of excavating and deal with them years ago.
If, if you're, if you look at it, orange is soils, which means nothing, um, from our standpoint, um, but green is protected wetlands, and there is a small portion of it in the wooded lot area.
It's not, yeah. It's in the wooded area, it's in the wooded area.
So, it does, and there is several portions of the remainder of your, our acreage that isn't. If it were, variances are typically, if natural features is a factor, is, is, it's a majority of where you want it to be.
Okay, now, like I said, I had been dealing with township government for a while, did they purposely put it up close? Because then, then, then everybody will say, oh, we're so glad you moved it back, don't get me wrong, I don't wanna a thousand foot back either.
That's really.
We don't know that.
That's, that's.
You know, but I understand, you're, you're not gonna say, no, the, the closest thing, I was, I was kinda curious, why did you think that wasn't a good site for that antenna? I mean, do you?
When I came into here, I was planning on voting yes, I had no problems because I've had other cell towers that I dealt with, I have never had any of them that was this close.
Okay. Yeah, and it's like they're saying, I mean, no offense, you said it was a thousand feet away from each road, they were kinda agreeing with you. And I was not agreeing with some of the stuff that, I mean, they're just here to sell a cell phone tower, and then go into another, they're going to another township next week, I mean, they're gonna get this done, so they really don't, like, care about us, but, um, I, I thank you for that, I thank you. I mean, they're gonna get this done, so they really don't, like, care about us, but, um, I, I thank you for that, I thank you for that, but it's not a thousand foot setback. It's not, it's three hundred, a little over three hundred feet, I think, off the, the county easement.
Yep, you're right.
Which is what, thirty-three, thirty-three foot from the center of the road, plus.
You know, I, I kinda understand where you guys are coming from, cause in front of my house, they were wanting to put a telephone pole in, telephone poles out of the sight of my view, and they were wanting to put a telephone pole right from my house.
Right.
Of course. Yeah, well, they can, they can do something.
So, so I kinda understand where you guys are coming from, and that's just a telephone pole, it's not a cell tower.
Yeah. And, and here's, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of things that fall into this, I believe you said, the, the piece of property that this cellphone tower, the proposed location for this cellphone tower is fourteen acres? Why, that's the smallest piece of land they got. Why on the fourteen, they have, they, they got the old farmstead right around the corner, on Reed Road, Ray Road, I mean, it's beautiful, and there's nobody there, nobody would complain.
Yeah. That would be a question for them.
Yeah, I know, I, it's, and I, and don't get me wrong, they're friends of mine, they're neighbors, but I, I mean, kinda, come on, put it right across the street, it's almost like an insult, you know, and it, and it's worse than Brian, I'm a little bit kitty-corner, but you're still, it's, you're still gonna see it, but. Yeah, and it's like, nobody, nobody really, well, what do you complain about, well, nobody's got one six hundred and two foot away from their front door, do I, do I want it, no. I, I mean, do we need it, yeah, but just put it back farther, the problem is solved, they don't even need to go for a variance. They're, they're gonna waste two months going for a variance.
They, they want to.
Well, maybe they're not up to business.
That's up to them.
Yeah, I would, I would do that.
Thank you.
So, anyways, how do we, how do we find out information about this, I mean, as.
Um, you would check the agenda, um, so that's on our website, um, it's one week before our planning commission meeting, um, you can also call.
And unfinished business. And you guys have the, this, this the planning commission, so what, what date is this, what is this?
The first Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
The last Wednesday of every month, a package is assembled and ready.
Right.
As of now.
Well, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your time, and I didn't even when I said we're underpaid.
Thank you.
Well, this nice lady brought up some very interesting information that I'd like to share with you, my name's Paula, whoa, that really works. Okay. So you asked them about, uh, cancer and all of those risks, and what their studies were, and she kinda really glazed over that, or said it's really not that important, or whatever, but, if you go to the reasons why not to have a cellphone tower um, in your neighborhood, the radio frequency RF radiation exposure, cellphone towers imminent non-analyzing RF factors, some studies suggest potential links to adverse health effects such as headaches, memory problems, dizziness, sleep disturbance, and depression in people living near cellphone towers. Well, I don't think she presented enough, good enough study about that, if you can find it on the internet, that these are things that they're discovering. I mean, how, how long have cellphone towers been around? And then they keep getting bigger, and then there's four G, five G added to them, so, there are evidence on their studies as health risks, and whether you think that it's a factor or not a factor, that's going to be right across the street. There's also cancer risks, the vulnerability of children, children are considered potentially more vulnerable to the RF radiation due to their developing nervous systems, and thinner skull bones, which may allow for deeper penetration of the radiation into their brains and bodies. That, you can find that on the internet. Why not to have a cellphone tower near your home? Not to mention the eyesore, and I did talk about, I, I moved out of the city, I was at seventeen and a half in Ryan for twenty-five years, we saved money for another twenty-five years to move out here. It, it's dark, we have, we have our friends and our neighbors that come over, and we, we look at the stars through our telescopes, we all got invested in some really neat telescopes, and, you know, some software where they're telling us what, what we're gonna see in the skies. And then you're gonna look over there, and you're gonna have the cellphone tower, you know, you're, oh, hey, you can find my house, the cellphone tower's right, right there. Right there, at the, in my driveway, just sit right there, just look right there, there goes, the aesthetics, the impact of the scenic area, the impact of the scenic area, gone. A hundred and eighty-five feet in the air? Lloyd mentioned something about, you're the planning commission, what are your plans for our area, we're rural, we're rural where we're at, we're agricultural and rural, what does a cellphone tower have to do with rural? I didn't move out here because I needed cellphone service, cause I don't care about it, at all. I don't even, this is not even mine, my company made me carry this around, cause then I'm an administrator and head of security, guess what? I get cellphone service there, I have access to every single one of my cameras in my office at sixteen and John R. I have a three-story building there, with a hundred and eighty-five offices, I can still access every camera, from my home, do I need a cellphone tower? No. No, I don't.
Thank you.
Right? I'm sorry.
No, I, I'm just watching the time.
But you know, you understand my point?
I, gotcha.
They're, they're talking about nine-one-one, I can't, when, when the power goes out, it's, we do medical, we handle medical information, so we have fifteen minute turnaround on reports, medical reports, billing and coding and stuff, if I, if there's power outage down there at my office building, I call AT&T, and they rush to the nearest station to get the phones up and running, so our servers are working. I can do all that from my home, I don't need another cellphone tower to do that. We have one, if, there's a map in here, have you guys know, do you know how many cellphone towers are here?
Okay, it's.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, I, I really hate to cut you off, but we're, we're.
Sixty.
Sixty?
We're way beyond.
You have variances for sixty.
For three minutes. But thank you, we do appreciate your input.
I really hope so, cause you guys were really, really awesome when I built my home, and, guess what, I had come up three feet, because I had, I lived in the, in the woods, in the flood. But you all gave it to me, you knew I was gonna go in the dirt.
Thank you. If there's, are there any other public comments? If not, a motion would be. Joe's a motion. Make a motion to adjourn at nine seventeen, all in favor?
I'll second. Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Michelle?
Joe wants.
Do I make copies to these guys? Not this. It's with that guy, alright, who next, I'll send it to you, you can put it in the next bag. It's the, in regards to the tower.
Power collapses.
Yes.
It's the architecture, power collapses, so, but.
But it's, it's very vague.
It does relevant to some more, so we know that.